Welcome this planning commission. The date is Monday, July 28th. Will everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The first item of tonight's agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes they'd like to make? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. The next item is the approval for the minutes for the July 14th, 2014 meeting. Does anyone have any changes or corrections? Yes ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, on page two, the second paragraph, the last part of that paragraph, the last line, a little complimentary, I think, can use a spell and change there, just replace the I with an E to satisfy the meaning of the sentence. And then in the fourth paragraph, starting with the, where Jeff Norah, it was Jeff Norah on the third line at the end, he was also saying more the first, second time, changed the E, the I to an E, that's it.
Okay. Can I see your, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, page four. Under streetscape, second sentence, the other look that was appealing to everyone was the street separated by the paper looking bike path. I necessarily wasn't in approval of that, so on to most.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else? Julie, did you get those? You're okay? Okay. All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for that as well.
Mr. Chairman, move as amended?
Second.
Motion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the public hearings for tonight. The first one is variance 2014 dash oh four. The location of the project is 10-6111 and 10-6112 on Cavaleal Ridge. The request is to permit a 16-foot wall and fence along Riverside Road across Cavaleal Ridge. A city code maximum height is six feet. With that being said, will the person who's doing the presentation, please come forward, state their name for city record? No?
I think they've asked for a continuance.
Oh, it is a continuance, I'm sorry. It is a continuance.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, would you like to, city staff please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, it's a variance application that the applicant is requesting additional time to review the issue further with neighbors and resolve some outstanding issues. They're requesting that the public hearing be continued to August 25th.
Thank you very much Julie, I appreciate that. With that being said, can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend a continuance to the August 25th, 2014 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting will be continued, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the planners report. Julie, you have some, a few things for us, I'm sure.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the community development intern Emily Othos has been working on aesthetic and architectural standards, and she has a presentation for you this evening. She'll be seeking some input from you based on the information that she provides, so I'll turn it over to Emily.
Thank you. Thank you Emily.
I have a presentation that should be pulled up here.
Now what's gonna happen Emily is that they told me that they're having a problem with the PowerPoint presentation, so he's gonna zoom a camera in on that and you'll see it right there.
Okay.
Okay? Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, so as Julie said, I'm here to talk about architectural materials. This relates, I was able to sit in the planning commission workshop during your last meeting where HKGI did their visual survey. And so this relates to some of those things that you talked about then, but specifically tonight, it's just about building material. One of the questions that's come up from the mayor and the community development department is how can Eden Prairie make sure that it gets the best architecture it can in the development process? So for example, on the right here, we're looking at a recent development, which I believe is a lead building. And so it came up that material is really critical to character. So the example that's showing here are four different buildings that are very similar scale and form and massing, but each has different material and each uses that material in a different way. And so this is about looking at the zoning code and the material that's regulated in it and trying to figure out how can we get the best material to convey the character that is unique to Eden Prairie. I'm gonna be asking you about three specific materials this evening, metal, wood, and composite material. And I'm bringing these up because they've made some pretty big strides, both technologically and architecturally. And then I'm also gonna be asking about curtain walls, which is actually a way of constructing an exterior wall, but it's regulated under building materials, so it's related. So, as I mentioned in the information packet that you got on Thursday, I think, there's a few things to consider when evaluating materials. Physical and visual density, I just wanted to put some graphics to those. Texture, color, pattern, weathering, and so this has to do with maintenance. And then material lifecycle becomes really important when considering new materials, when you sort of gauge them against old materials. There's arguments made for how readily can a material be made and how readily can it be recycled once the building has been, has deteriorated. And then again, this is about looking at the sort of aesthetic character of Eden Prairie today and determining if there is a desired character that isn't being met in the current So starting with metal, the pros, it's highly resistant to weathering, excellent performance against mold, parasites, insects. It's easy to install and maintain, it's durable and versatile, and it's very easily recycled. The cons are that it's not terribly sustainable in production, so it uses a lot of energy to actually fabricate it. But the expected lifespan with maintenance is about 40-plus years. This is currently limited to 25% in all zoning districts, except for single-family residential and rural. And it is allowed as an accent material in the town center design guidelines. So, and I think, maybe I'll present this whole thing and then I'll get your reactions at the end. But these are basically showing buildings that are close to 100% metal exterior cladding. So to consider using it in office and industrial. To consider its use in mixed use and retail. And then in multifamily residential. So top left is aluminum siding, top right is corten, bottom right, the white in front is a zinc aluminum siding, a zinc composite siding. And then wood. Wood's having a big resurgence in architecture right now, particularly because they're figuring out how to build up with it taller than before. So it has a traditional aesthetic, it's very sustainable in the sense that there's very little pollution generated in its production and manufacturing, and it's an abundantly available resource. The cons are that it's less resistant to fire, though technology has made some advances in that in terms of what you coat it with. It's susceptible to damage from insects, rodents, mold, and moisture, and it's not the most durable choice for weather protection. So it takes a lot of maintenance to get it to last up to its 55-year kind of lifespan. Wood is currently limited to 25% in all districts, except for single-family residential and rural, but it is also allowed as accent material in the town center design guidelines. So again, looking at how wood is now being used and how it could be used for commercial, retail, and office. For multifamily residential. And then composite facade. So the pros, composite facade is starting to be used in some pretty high-profile projects. One, one pro that I don't have up here, oh no, I do have it, all right, I'll just go through these. It's generally very strong and durable, it's resistant to fire, weather, insects, and decay. It can be lightweight, which result, results in savings throughout the entire construction project, from actually putting it up to building the structure of the material, of the building. And it's very flexible, which gives the option for unique forms. The cons, high pollution and energy consumption during production. And if it's painted in northern climates, the paint will often chip off during freeze-thaw Its cost per square foot really depends, there's a lot of different types of composite facade. But right now, it's not mentioned in the zoning code regulation. I believe it is allowed as an accent material in the town center design guidelines, but it's referenced as synthetic material. So as I mentioned before, there's a lot of different types of composite facade. There's metal composite, wood, wood composite, fiber cement, something called richelite. A lot of these are just different mixtures of paper, or wood pulp, or plastic, or different things thrown together. So I wanted to take a moment to just call out one type of composite and show all the different ways it's used in the exterior building. So here, it's mimicking wood. And again, looking at this aesthetic and considering if this would be something viable for office, industrial, for residential. In this case, on the left, just the building is the composite material. These panels, this is a school, these panels in blue and yellow are the composite. And then the last thing I'm gonna talk about is curtain walls. So curtain walls are actually the outer covering of a building, they're non-structural, they can be made of all these different materials we've been talking about, metal curtain walls, wood curtain walls, panel curtain walls, made of composite materials. But basically, they're very lightweight, and because they're non-structural, they reduce construction costs through the entire project. The expected lifespan varies, but I did see maybe 10 to 15 years in one source, so potentially on the shorter side. This is a residential project that was just completed in Portland, it's, the whole building is glass panel wall. And then these are other examples for office, industrial, and parking. And that's it. So I think, if we maybe start with metal and whatever, whatever thoughts you have, initial reactions, or...
Commissioners, any comments for Emily there?
Yeah, a couple comments that come to my mind. When I read the materials, my basic understanding for this review, why we're doing this review is that newer materials have been developed since the original standards were agreed to, and they may be nice materials to use in the city of Eden Prairie. But the question is, do they fit the standards, or should the standards be changed? When I, the more I thought about this, inherent in this are considerations like, what, what should the look of the city of Eden Prairie, particularly in the commercial sector, be? And so my only question, before we jump into the materials, is, is really, are we clear on the objectives of, of the effort? And that's kind of a pet peeve of mine, in other words, do we really understand against what standards these materials should be chosen? So if you look, just as an example, at the materials that I was given, one of the standards that's used in the current Eden Prairie code are, is the phrase comparable in quality, I think in quality and grade, to certain other things. And so my first question is really, are we really clear on what our objectives are here before we jump into the materials?
That's an excellent, yeah, go ahead.
Because it's very easy, my, my corporate experience is, it's amazing how many discussions you can get into in great detail about things without being clear on what's the purpose of the discussion and what's, what's the objective of the discussion. On the other side, there's not a need to overthink this.
Right.
But I guess I'm asking the commission members and the planning department and so on, are we really clear what we're trying to get done here before we start making choices? And do we, as an example, or maybe we don't need to, do we really understand what we want the look of Eden Prairie in the commercial area to be?
So Julie, maybe you can set the stage a little bit for us, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in the time that staff has discussed this inter-
Your mic on?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
It's on, right? Can you hear me now? I'm like the commercial, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, I don't know if our audience at home can hear you talk.
I'll try and talk a bit louder.
Thank you.
Use my mom voice. So, as we've talked about this internally at a staff level, what we've talked about and discussed with others in, in the city is, how does the city of Eden Prairie want to look long-term? Not only as we're seeing new development come in, but also redevelopment of existing. As, as you all know, the city is, for the most part, fully developed. A lot of what we're going to see in the future will be redevelopment of existing strip centers, redevelopment in possibly industrial and commercial areas, multifamily. And what types of materials do we wanna see in place to make sure that they are sustainable, that they have the durability and the character that the city is looking for? So, there've been broader discussions about a whole host of things, but tonight, we're trying to focus on just the construction materials and those items that are currently allowed by code, and whether or not that should be, that palette should be enlarged to allow some other materials that are maybe a little more up and coming, while preserving that sustainability, long-term look, but also promoting ingenuity by the development community so that we do see innovative designs as our community redevelops.
Can I just add?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, even though this is pretty specific, I don't think this is about making a decision, it's kind of about saying, here are three really big materials that are showing up in other city zoning codes like CHASCA and EDINA, and to kind of take a first pass at these pictures and to sort of start to hone in on what is Eden Prairie, what's the goal for what, what it's gonna look like in 30 years. So I think it's about starting to have that conversation, more so than saying, yep, we want metal.
And are you talking more downtown area than commercial, or both? Suburbs, I mean, kinda help us?
For all of the station areas.
Mm-hmm.
And then for all of the other zoning designations. So with the exception of, I think, what's already not regulated, which would be most of the residential, some of the multifamily residential. But mostly updating these commercial areas, office, public, town center, industrial and industrial districts.
So Stephen, does that help answer your question a little bit?
Well, it's, I, I would say yes and no. The question in my mind really is, do we have a reasonable fix on what we want the look to be before we start picking materials? And I absolutely understand your point, that you could pick materials for aesthetic reasons, but I don't know that necessarily mean the materials are good from a fire code standpoint and things like that. So I'm just really ask, I'm just really just asking, asking the question. An example of a way you could approach that, and then I'd like to see what everybody else thinks, is, are we really clear, I mean, right now, the code uses this phrase comparable in grade and quality to the following. Do we really understand what comparable in grade and quality means, 'cause that could have a whole series of definitions, and then materials could be picked on the basis of understanding that. But, the commission members may feel, and the planning department may feel, that's an unnecessary step, I'm just raising it before we go further.
Julie, do you have any comments to that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think it's important to hone in on what Emily identified in her comments, is that we're looking for your reactions to the types of materials, certainly to Mr. Frank's comments about durability and fire code protection and those types of things. As we move on through this review and, and get to the point where we're preparing a draft, we'll be looking at all of those issues, and, you know, we'll include discussions with other staff members that have that expertise. But for right now, we're looking at getting comment from the planning commission as to aesthetically, what appeals to you as a commission, what would you like to see us research further, just to give us an idea of which direction to head.
I'm assuming some of this is kind of coming from that, the composite piece of that, 'cause that's kind of new, new technology, it's lasting longer, it looks just like, you know, you can have composite brick that looks just like real brick. I'm guessing that's where some of this is coming from, is that accurate?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say that's an accurate statement, yes.
Okay. Stephen, I don't know if that helps you or not, or is anyone else?
Well, all I'm doing is just raising a, a few points, and then I think it's up to everybody, everybody else, how they, how they would like to, like to proceed. As long as we end up with a set of expanded materials that meet the standards the city would like to set for the future, to me, however we do it is fine.
Great. Travis, just a little bit in your wheelhouse, give us some, give us some thoughts here, buddy.
Well, since we're looking at a TOD standardization here, and I'd like to see some effective use of materials that have been sustainable, or have been qualified as sustainable in other areas, that have the same climate and geograph, geographic difference, differences that Minnesota does. And without tailoring in specifically to any one particular material, specifically, or a composite, or metal, or a brick, or a stone, or any of that, you know, various specifics, if we come up with a standard that's based upon, and I think, I think that's what you're trying to get at, is the objective towards a standard, as opposed to getting tunnel-visioned into looking at metal, or looking at composite, or looking at anything else that, I mean, these new technologies, they lie within a standard, but do we want to exclude or include various technologies based upon that standard? And right now, we're kinda, our basis for any discussion is what's already in place, and a lot of this can, kinda came through the TCA about, what, two years ago, I think, or three years ago, we went through a TCA update on what we want, maybe it was more than that, on, on what we wanna do with the town center area and the remainder of the town center area, when that was being developed and redeveloped. So I, I think, you know, I'm in alignment, almost 100% in what, you know, in what you're saying over there. But I would say specifically, let's tailor towards a standard that's known to be useful in the TOD area. And do we have any of that, does, did staff compile any of that kind of data, or do they have any direction in that, in that type of data that...
You're saying material that's shown to be useful in TOD? That's what you're asking about?
I'm saying, no, a standard that's been useful in TOD areas, and there's been-
Material regulation standard?
I think it'll probably, yeah, for, 'cause tonight, we're dealing with material.
Yeah.
So, on the, a material standardization, yeah.
Okay. There's not really a best practice for material regulation specifically in TOD areas. I think the best practice for material that's sort of out there right now is what you're talking about, things that are sustainable, things that have a really complete lifecycle, things that are renewable and recyclable, things that have a longer sort of lifespan as a building, things like that. So I think that's not necessarily connected to TOD, but that's what is out there as best practice.
'Cause when I think of TOD, as opposed to, I mean, that's, it's more or less a, a community project, a capital improvement project, it's not gonna be any one specific, I mean, there're gonna be private ownerships in there, but there is that, that common interest that appeals to it. And so when you think about, you know, sustainability, you got the economic aspect of it too, and now you might have a really great material, and you have a standard, standard for that material. However, its maintenance costs, for example, are just gonna be through the roof over 30 years or 40 years, and then now you've just completely drained whatever sustainability on the economics side, I mean, there's, we got that presentation last week that had five or four different layers of sustainability, and economics was one of them. I know we had a discussion about economics and the market bearing the, you know, allowing the marketplace to bear that competition for materials' sake. So I think if we come up with the standard that we like, as opposed to the material that we like, or am I just too much going hard, I don't know?
No, so actually, what I'm hearing you say is maybe the existing regulations as they are right now are even too specific, and that you're maybe interested in hearing about a standard that sort of creates an umbrella under which materials will either fall or not fall, as opposed to generating a list of materials?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's the kind of thing we're discussing, you know, I mean, once again, everyone would, would have to decide what they wanted to do. So, based on the materials that I've seen, that you folks were nice enough to provide us, when you talk about Eden Prairie, Eden Prairie apparently uses a standard comparable in grade and quality to one of the following things. And then they have certain materials, and so anything that would be included in the group of acceptable things would have to be comparable in grade and quality to the ones that are listed here. The question is, what does comparable in grade and quality mean? That could have cer, a number of different definitions. If you look at, and I'm not saying we wanna be like St. Louis Park or anything else like that, but if you look at St. Louis Park, St. Louis Park breaks the materials into class one, class two, class three, and class four, I assume, based on some, on some standards. Edina, once again, we're not trying to be like them, but Edina apparently limits the set of materials to certain things, rather than saying they have to be comparable in grade and quality. So I think enough for me, really, I'm just asking this question of, are we clear enough on the standards, whatever they are? Is that really, if we don't do that, is, are we, are we looking at the cart before the horse, is kind of the question?
Yeah, so you're saying if we come up with a standard, then the materials will automatically fall within that standard versus coming up with the, doing it backwards?
Yeah, and I'm not-
In your opinion?
Yes, in my opinion, based on my experience, I'm not trying to create more work or anything else, but then we can evaluate based on, on the criteria set forth in the standard, what materials, new or old, fit that. But I think that's, the commission and, once again, the planning department really have to decide how you'd like to proceed in total.
And I think that's probably a little bit different than the way it's set up tonight, but I don't think that's necessarily out of the realm of expectations that we could go if the commissioner, the commission likes to do that. Travis, would you, you kind of fall on that same-
Yeah, I, I would, 'cause a standard would give great transparency to material engineers and those that build it and construct it, and then those, you know, developers, what can we use and work, and then the art, developers will be able to hire the architects and say, okay, what, what works and fits into this standard?
Right.
At a standard, I mean, as an example, based on just what I saw here, a standard could have a number of dimensions, aesthetics could be one of them, sustainability could be another one, cost could be another one, you don't wanna have an endless, we're not trying to create a ton of work, we're just trying to create conceptual clarity that, again, you use to select the materials, but-
Commissioner Kirk, did you have a comment as well?
Yeah, I missed, I, first off, nice presentation Emily, nice job. I missed the last presentation, the transit-oriented develop presentation, so maybe I'm coming at it from a different perspective, but I'm, I took a step back mentally when I was reading this material and watching your presentation, and saying, what do I want Eden Prairie to look like? And to me, I'm probably gonna be pigeonholed in the traditionalist perspective. I kinda like the, the community and the, and the way our community has developed, and I think, you know, the 75-25 mix we have, and having a limitation of a certain type of material in that 75% of a, of an exterior structure, I think is a positive. And in fact, I like the, the approach that we've taken. Now- Now, you know, the stone, the brick, that sort of thing, I think that gives Eden Prairie a look and a richness, in my opinion. I think there are materials that can be added as technology comes forward and new materials are developed, I think we can expand that list. But personally, I wouldn't want to expand it too far. In other words, my personal taste would be, do I want to see a metals, a metal exterior of a building that's, that fits into that 75%? No, I don't. I, I think some of the materials you were talking about, some of the more innovative or materials or uses of materials for that 25% accent part of our, of the way we have our code set up, I think that'd be great. I'd love to see a little bit more innovation, you know, from our developers in the accent. But on the other hand, I kind of like the stability and the look of Eden Prairie. As I said, kind of a traditionalist there, but that's, that's my two cents worth on the whole thing.
Julie, do you have any comments with the discussion you've heard so far?
Mr. Chair, not at this point because we haven't heard from necessarily all of the commissioners.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Chair. I like this discussion of the standard, I think that we should probably go that route. I guess that being said, is there benefit to go through the exercise that they've asked us tonight? If we look, step back and look at a standard, should we still go through this exercise? I guess would be my question. Would it be beneficial?
Emily, go ahead.
I guess the conversation we were hoping to generate was something along the lines of, yep, I really like Eden Prairie right now. It has a strong aesthetic, it has a strong character, the accents work. Do I picture, you know, this building here on the left in Eden Prairie? Nope, doesn't do it for us.
Yeah, I mean-
That's the kind of-
The reason I, the reason I missed the meeting two weeks ago is I was, I was in Europe and, and I was watching, you know, traveling some and seeing the aesthetics of the buildings in Europe and what I felt, you know, my emotional feel was, I was very happy to get back to Eden Prairie. I was happy to get back to the kind of aesthetics we have in our community. And again, that's a very personal opinion and I respect others, but as I said, that's my two cents worth on it. Now, can we use some innovative stuff for accents? Hey, yeah, I think we should.
Andy, have any comments to?
Yeah, I'm kind of where Commissioner Kirk is explaining and I have not visited Europe, so that isn't my perspective at all. It's just simply that Eden Prairie has been changing and will continue to go in a direction that I'm not even sure I know where it will be in 30 years, let alone 20. And there are experiences out there and perspectives and living circumstances that people bring with them as they live here in Eden Prairie that may help generate new innovative things. When I hear about the accents and maybe the 25% as the area to, you know, give some more energy to, I'm supportive. I really am a traditionalist. I come from New England, much more traditional than that, but I've been gone from there for a long time. So I'm, I'm anxious to see us hang on to things that are enduring, that, that are not going to be cost prohibitive. You know, it may be good to put them up, but I'm not sure how well they will last. And I honestly think that some of the things that we, I value about the community are that most of the things that I see are holding together well. That's not, it's not perfect. We don't always have the best information, you know, at the time, things are going to happen that we might have. And so I, I just think that it's always possible to do some new things, particularly where we're doing redevelopment. And we were talking before the meeting, Commissioner Frank and I, about the redevelopment aspect and I stopped to think about the fact that there are some really dated kinds of things, not just in Prairie particularly. I don't see it that way too mu, too much. But certainly those areas are going to be ones that are going to be prime for redevelopment and I honestly would love it if we didn't fall into, well, make it look this way and then in 20 years I'll turn around and that looks like was what we did in 1970. And now I don't think that was so great after all, you know? But I don't know enough about architecture, number one, to really be sure what I'm getting at, at this point. I'm still learning what this really needs to be attending to. But I agree, some of the massing of some of these things and the, and the new materials probably would be a little jarring to most people right now. That's where I am.
I mean, I don't see anything, Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see anything in the, in what Eden Prairie's done today or what we've done in the last, you know, 10, 15 years that I think anyone would really look and say, oh, we really made some large mistakes. I think, you know, I think what I'm hearing is that there's some new materials out there, composite would be one of them, that they've made huge strides over the years with and that maybe we can add that to the list.
Right.
And then I agree with the commissioners too of being able to come up with a standard. And I think if we were to come up with a standard and then like Stephen was talking about, and then being able to drop those materials into those standards, into those areas, maybe another way to look at it. But I don't think that there's anything that the city's been doing for the last, you know, 15, 20 years that everyone kind of doesn't look back and go, you know, it still looks nice. It still looks good.
Yeah. And, you know, also from my experience, the big danger in anything like standards is you create a whole big new project and people are spending lots of time trying to figure out what the standard should be. If you look at what's already written in the code, I go back to that phrase, comparable in grade and quality to the following, that's the standard that's been in place for the 75% of the surfaces on commercial that a couple of the commissioners have referred to. If we could dimensionalize that, if we could say, what are the six to eight characteristics, sustainability, whatever they might be, that make up comparable in grade and quality? And then the materials that were shown for aesthetic selection would be materials that would meet that standard, then we're not lowering our standard and we're looking at a greater variety of materials. Then you can make the aesthetic choice and know that you're sticking with the standard that has helped the city become what it is today. So that is a shortcut, just one example of a shortcut, but we would have to dimensionalize unless it already is. And this comparable in grade and quality, and then, you know, maybe it has eight dimensions and then say, look, the materials that I'm showing you that I'd like to get your aesthetic reaction to all meet this standard. Now, on the accent side, here are some accent materials that meet the standard and I'd like you to, once, once that base is established, then one could pick on an aesthetic basis and you're pretty much there. Just an idea, I don't know.
Yeah, as you flip through, Commissioners, as you flip through the presentation of the paperwork that was given to us and you go to, you know, the one that has the architectural standards and it goes through neighborhood, commercial, and community, and then you flip to the next page that has the districts and industrial park and then all the materials that are below that, does anyone have, and looking at just those pages, does anyone have in the materials allowed below, any strong reaction to something that should be there that isn't there? Or that is there that shouldn't be there? You know, we can, we can start with the one that says for districts where it says neighborhood commercial at the very top and then community, commercial, and regional, commercial, we're all on that same page there. Does anyone see anything in that materials list below that A, should be there that's not, or that is there that should be kind of kicked out? Any strong reactions? Okay. What about moving over to the industrial park one? Same thing goes for that. Anybody seeing anything that should be omitted, that should be added? And I think you could add composite again to any one of these and still kind of get away with it. Then moving on to the, where it says materials limited maximum 25%, it goes for neighborhood commercial and community commercial, anybody in the materials that are listed below, does anyone see anything on that page? Okay. Anything goes, that's kind of a hard one, but I don't know, I don't know what you really do there or don't do there. Let's see within reason. And then the last one, I guess, is for the Eden Prairie Town Center area. For materials there.
And these are just design guidelines?
Right. Any comments one way or the other? Emily, how am I doing for you?
Great.
Okay. I think that's kind of what you were looking for, where it was kind of like a reaction from one point or another point of view on, on how we're doing as a city in general? And anything we needed to add to that?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
I will throw out a thought though, as an example.
Please.
When, I, I lived in California for a fair amount of time and if you look at, or Vegas, if you look at how stucco or stucco simulated exteriors are executed, they can look very low end. And so I just throw that out as an example.
When I know regionally with stucco, we've had a hard time in building materials in Minnesota. And when it's done right, it's fine and when it's done wrong-
It's disastrous.
It's disastrous, you know, 10 years later. Julie, any comments to add as we're kind of going through this?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, thank you for your comments. As Mr. Kirk discussed with Emily or brought to her attention, that's the kind of comment we were looking for. Is there anything glaring out there that you'd like to see included in the standards? Is there anything there that's right now that you'd like to see discontinued in the standards? We're just looking for that reaction to some of those materials. If there, as through your travels, you're seeing other things in communities or regions of the country that you think would be appropriate here, we're interested in that. And certainly if you're out and about and you see those types of things, feel free to take a picture and send it our way as we continue to work on this.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing, you know, going back to Stephen's point about the stucco, that one makes me nervous, only because you don't know what you get until the stucco. Until it's almost too late. And it can cost people time and money and you, yeah, you could be getting something that you don't know what you're getting unless it's tested appropriately and whatnot.
Seems pretty bad luck, it's stuff.
Yeah, I agree. Other than that, I think everything else is, is pretty good. Yes.
I have a question for engineering. Yeah, you thought you were going to get off the hook tonight, huh?
Thought I was, yeah.
What, definitionally, what would be the difference from saying to Stephen's point, comparable in grade and quality in our code to putting something that would be more code oriented on a standardized system? Like, is there any code terms that could be utilized that would get to the point of, or get and address the issues and concerns of Stephen's point, yet not pigeonhole us too much in allowing or denying various types? Because I'm worried about that comparable to portion of the code as well.
Are you worried that's too general?
Well, I'm, okay, it's, it's usually, I mean, we, we have a standard, or I shouldn't say standard, we have a basis for which to, to grade everything else. And is there a better way to language it where we wouldn't have this tried and true technology of brick and concrete? We would have a certain standard, you know, maintains a certain amount of, I don't know, you know, engineering terms. You can help me out, but maintains a certain level of-
There's, there's some things right in the document here. So in some ways, it's not that it, it's not that anybody wants to get too specific either because that could be, that could be a real problem. But to dimensionalize under comparable in, in quality, what that means, there are things in here as an example throughout the materials that we were provided, sustainability, weathering, aesthetics, occupant life safety, things, maximum fire protection, things like that. Those are just dimensions.
I, I think we're just trading off words there because I, I think it would be hard unless we got very, very detailed, specific on exactly what the material was, to really define something that, that wouldn't have an interpretation to it. And, you know, I, I thought this interesting when I read the, the material on the Minneapolis material regulations are very, very soft, but they do a site, what do they call it? Site plan review, which allows the council, the planning department, and the Planning Commission more input into it. Now, you know, there's some balance there on how specific you get, specific you get versus leaving it too broad and making it a, an opinion of the planning department and the Planning Commission every time. But I think it would be difficult to get, to narrow it down too much more than saying, it's got to be roughly equivalent to this. What, John, do you remember the, the material we had in many discussions about?
When they brought it all in front of us?
They brought it all in front of it. And, and, you know, depending on your perspective, you could say, well, it looks like the same stuff. And then somebody say, yeah, but this and, so I don't know how you, I, I mean, it would be great if we could, but I'm not sure I know how to do that. And my, my speculation is if it was easy to do, it would have been done already. You know, if it was easy to quantify, we want a material to have these specific characteristics and yet leave it broad enough to allow, to not scare off developers. Because we want, we want developers to bring interesting ideas within a certain range. So I don't know.
No, I think that's, I think those are very good points and it's not, maybe dimensionalizing isn't the right way to do it. The question is really, are we, as we make decisions and move forward into the future, are we doing so against a look that is Eden Prairie? And you could do that a lot of different ways. You could do site reviews, you could do different things. That's really all I'm asking. Are we clear that we're moving in that, in that direction? Because people change over time, you know, city could evolve in certain ways, in some parts the city and other ways in other parts. That's really all I'm asking. What's the best way to do that?
Thank you. Travis, I know we hijacked your question from Rod. Do, why don't you ask it?
Hijack Rod's answers.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you ask the question again unless Rod, you're ready to just answer it anyways?
Well, I'll tell, I try to attempt to answer that question based on what engineering standards, how we deal with that. I'm not, I'm not familiar with how this is, is interpreted. I would assume a lot of this is based on that, the phrase you're referring to is a staff decision on if they feel it's compatible in quality and, and grade of what they think. But in an engineering environment, our standard, we have standards as well and specifications, but most of those are based on testing results. So it has to be, you know, the tumbus has to meet a certain gradation, the aggregate does a certain amount of oil content and, and then you've got to pass the, a strength test and, so it's all based on performance results and in this case, I think this is much more subjective in that is this material compatible with something else? I mean, it's, you've got different grades of glass, you've got different thicknesses of glass, you know, there's all kinds of variables in any of these materials and the suppliers.
Which kind of goes back to the standards a little bit, I guess, right? You're talking about standards of thicknesses of glass, for example. One thing I know that they're asking here, I wish this was numbered, when you go past the Eden Prairie Building Survey and then you go to the top of the page where it says new period, new materials for review, composite facades and cladding, there's something, I think you're, you're hoping, Emily, that you'll get some reaction from us on this page as far as the different materials that are asked on that page. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
And I look at like, like, is it called Richlight?
Yes.
Like, explain what that is. I have no idea what that is.
So Richlight, I can't speak to its specifics, but it's made from some combination of like water and paper and wood pulp.
Water, paper, and wood pulp?
Wood pulp. And then like there's usually a chemical involved that hangs it all together as a durable material. So Richlight has become really architecturally popular because it's very water resistant, resistant to rain. It has a lifespan of probably close to 50 years. It's very, it can be recycled, so there- it can be recycled, so there are companies that will make building material, and then they take the extras, and they make countertops for kitchens, and they make cutting boards, and skateboards, and skate parks. So, this is one of those materials that, I mean, there's an architect up in Duluth that builds all of his houses and all of his projects with it. So, these are the, you know, that's, that's one example of how composite materials are, are used. Um, and so, it's sort of, it's really sort of an aesthetic question, because these are aesthetic regulations. So, after you sort of determine the aesthetic, is this an acceptable material for Eden Prairie? Then you sort of say, does it meet building codes, does it meet fire protection? And nothing that I've presented here doesn't meet those things.
Wouldn't have made it to your list unless it did.
They're, they're all already being used, they're all fire resistant, up to, you know, the federal standard, or, so it's really, at this point, it's just about aesthetics. And I'll also say, it is, um, it's very common for cities to list materials very specifically. And in fact, they either list them, or they don't have aesthetic building regulation. And that's because, I hear what you're saying about this umbrella standard, but something like vinyl would fit into that, and vinyl is a common material that cities just prohibit. But a developer might come in and say, it's really cheap, and it's really cost effective, and it's economically sustainable. And I can recycle it when I'm done, and it protects from rain and weather, and, but vinyl's pretty much across the board already been determined as a material that no city wants in their kind of commercial areas. So, that's why we're starting to just list out the materials. And by listing more, the hope would be to provide more flexibility to architects and developers to, to be able to determine what's right for their project and what's right for their building.
Makes sense, I think for Richlight, though, it's hard for me, I mean, I'd almost wanna look at Rod and say, you know, you tell me what you think, type of thing, because until I see it in front of me, I, I mean, Travis can probably do a much better job of picking it than I could, you know, or something like that. Any comments specifically about this page, as the commissioners have them?
Well, my personal opinion, again, is, is that, you know, when we look at, um, the, the list, the list, the seventy-five percent list, you know, composites may be something that should creep into that list.
Right.
Assuming that they meet the durability and, and sustainability and, and some of those aspects. You know, again, but that's a personal opinion, if you, if, if you then said, well, you like composites, why not put metal facade? I'd say, nah, I don't like it. You know, is it just as lot, I mean, could a builder, could a developer make a good case for it? Absolutely, but aesthetically, I personally would say, that's not what I would like to see in our city. The composites, for me personally, start to move in the direction that, yeah, there are probably composites out there that I think would fit very well in Eden Prairie. I, I don't know how to quantify that. Any more than that, at least.
Yeah, no, I agree. Any other comments? Emily, what else do you need from us?
Nothing.
She's done with us already.
Got a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Like, all the composite pictures here, they're very contemporary looking buildings, are there, do you have any examples of composite materials looked in the, that are put in a more traditional look? Or is that kind of, composites always just kind of associated with contemporary look?
I think one of the big challenges, um, in finding pictures is because these are new, they're being used by, kind of, big architectural projects, and so, a lot of it, yep, a lot of the buildings look really contemporary. When you use new materials, you tend to get architects that are really contemporary and maybe pushing the boundaries a bit. So, you know, they could certainly be used in traditional ways. It is difficult finding pictures of that, but, um, I think fiber cement is pretty, is pretty common, it's probably made its way into a mixed-use building somewhere in Eden Prairie or around Eden Prairie, but, so, yeah, and particularly with metal, too. There's not many traditional style buildings done with metal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as I look at the rest of the pictures, you know, Richlight, I think, is a hard one for me, unless I, I guess I saw it in front of me. Would I be able to comment one way or another? I think we kind of all see, you know, move on to the next page, the concrete facades. You know, I'm sure there's plenty of examples in Eden Prairie where we've all seen that. And turn the page and looking at the panel curtain walls, can, is, are there any buildings in Eden Prairie that have that, that you can think of? Julie, can you think of anything, or, or Rod for that man? Andrew?
Just a, I can't think of one, but just a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Are metal curtain walls only allowed in the town center?
I'm sorry.
Are the metal curtain walls only allowed in the town center? Because I don't see it listed anywhere else, could you ex, well, maybe it's just accent, could you explain that?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the curtain walls are only listed in the town center design guidelines, they are not provided elsewhere in any of the other districts.
So, the rest, so, it seems like either we allow that further than just the town center, it's just, you just have it in the town center, and the rest of Eden Prairie is different? It seems like we should either expand that or relative, I guess, even more. Not sure why it's just in the town center and not.
Do you know why it's just in the town center?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I can't speak directly to that, since that was, uh, done before I arrived on the scene. I can certainly do a little more research on that as a part of coming forward with additional information for you.
That would be great, and I think more, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I remember some of those discussions, I didn't remember the, the curtain wall specifically, but I, I remember that when we talked about the whole town center code and, and standards, that there was a little bit, you know, we, we were trying to make the town center look a little bit unique inside of Eden Prairie. So, there was discussion about allowing some things that maybe weren't, um, traditional throughout the entire city, but to make that, the, the town center a little bit unique, and, you know, some of the, the pedestrian, uh, friendly areas, and, and I think there was some thought about allowing, you know, some slightly different architectural uses in that area, because we felt it was a, a unique part of the city.
Do you remember specifically talking about curtain walls?
I don't, I don't at all.
This is the first that I remember talking in a conversation.
I wouldn't have remembered it was in there, but.
Right.
I think that, don't you agree with that kind of discussion about allowing some uniqueness in, in that area?
Yeah, I mean, I think with all these materials, you know, you were brought up a good point when you were talking about a metal facade, and would you wanna see it, you know, in certain areas, and you say, no, but then you look at, you know, the next page there, when you look up the very first picture, you know, metal facade, wood imitation. And you're like, oh, yeah, okay, well, it could look like that, you know, I've seen tile floors with wood imitation that you'd swear is wood and not tile. So, I think it kind of depends on where it is and what it looks like, like, I wouldn't wanna see an all steel building either, I agree with you, but then all of a sudden, you start adding some of the architectural developments in there, and, and you go, oh, well, that's not, it may be steel, but it doesn't look like steel. And then, and then that becomes accept, I mean, there's so many different ways you can spin it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Well, it seems, it seems to me there are, there are a couple of, of different choices, taking into account everything everybody has said. And that is, the thing that, um, I keep hearing a lot, though, is the look of Eden Prairie.
Right.
So, one, one way you could approach that would be, say, well, we're gonna, as much as possible, define that upfront. That's one way you could approach it. That has issues, may not be easy, maybe you get too detailed, it has all kinds of potential issues. Another, another approach could be that you create a process that's not cumbersome, and the look of Eden Prairie is one of the critical criteria in approving projects in the future, and it's a judgment of the people who are reviewing the project at the time. You could have a little, that has some disadvantages, too. But it seems to me, we just need to make sure that the look of Eden Prairie, which has been pretty darn successful, and we've heard some nice comments about, is adhered to over time, I thought that was a really interesting comment you made, that sometime if you go, and doesn't mean you shouldn't do this, but sometimes if you go to the newer materials, you attract architects who tend to be more modern rather than traditional.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's interesting, do we want it to look more modern rather than traditional? I don't have the answer to that, but it's just interesting how you could get that kind of a creep. So.
Yeah, great.
You could either have a process that, and I don't mean a big cumbersome one, where judgment is applied at the point that developments are brought in front of the city, to try and make sure that the look of Eden Prairie is being sustained. Or you could try and do a little bit of definition upfront, or a little of both, but not too much of either.
Do you, do you get, uh, Julie and Rod, do you get a lot of pushback between our seventy-five, twenty-five percent, what we have right now?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, we do not, in my experience, get a lot of pushback on that seventy-five, twenty-five percent. As you well know, we have the PUD process that any developer can explore if they want to exceed that, or provide less than the seventy-five percent and increase the twenty-five percent, if that's the case. They can always go through that process as part of the PUD, requesting a waiver to the construction materials. It's my understanding that's been used a handful of times, uh, in order to promote ingenuity as new developments come forward. And as you said, that allows the planning commission and ultimately the city council, the opportunity to take a look at those newer materials or different materials, if you will, and weigh in on whether or not that is a look that Eden Prairie wants to see in place.
I mean, I would say, I guess, in kind of wrapping things up a little bit, was, or is that, you know, I like where the city of Eden Prairie has gone. I don't think that there's a problem with where it's gone with the seventy-five, twenty-five. And if we can add new materials and kind of keep to the look and feel where Eden Prairie has been and is currently, I think we're doing okay. I think the city's done a really good job of, of keeping our city, uh, uniform, all kind of looking good. I think we're kind of on the cusp of new and upcoming, uh, materials that are coming in, but yet we still kind of have that feel to it. We're not a real modern city where you see a whole bunch of glass buildings everywhere. And I personally kind of like it, I don't know what the other commissioners feel about it. I don't get a lot of pushback when I, when the citizens come in here and kind of yay or nay certain projects and what they look and feel. I don't know, Travis, so, what are, what are your thoughts?
I have a, kind of a philosophical question, and maybe you have an answer to it, Emily. When we look at the TOD, because that's kind of what this new material discussion is tailored towards, and looking in, in the conversations of the contemporary or the more modern, and the usage of these materials that are picked up by more contemporary and kind of out there, testing the boundary type architects, is that been, has that been used in successful other transit locations where, where it's looked well and aesthetically pleasing? It's been sustainable, and it's cost-effective, and, you know, in all the various aspects that, that we'd like to have? Or, or, or have they tried to use those, those new materials in a traditional sense in the TOD? And has that been successful, or have some of them failed in various locations, you know, nationally or regionally?
Yeah, I think probably both, you know, like, I think these materials are showing up in a lot of cities that, places like Boulder, Colorado, and Portland, and San Francisco, bigger cities, and then smaller cities that have always sort of led the charge in terms of probably development processes and materials for buildings. So, I think they have shown up in TOD areas. I think they don't have to show up for TOD to be successful, you know, that's really about walkability and density, and a brick building can, can achieve those things, just like, uh, a metal building could. What I would say is, there's probably still some unknown with different composite materials about how they are going to deteriorate over time, and how long they're actually gonna last. I think we probably, probably in Europe, they're just starting to hit a point where they have composite, they have buildings with composite materials that have been up for thirty, thirty-five years. Maybe, maybe not even that long. And so, they're sort of learning what types of deterioration are happening. Did that answer your question a little?
Yeah, and then, I think you elaborate a little bit further in the, um, what's happening across the pond with, with their data collection, and being able to really figure out what, what has worked and what hasn't. I think, you know, like, when I think of a TOD area, it's gonna have a different community feel, and this presentation is for the TOD areas, so it's gonna have a different community feel than what we've already established under the different industrial and commercial and other zoning char, zoning areas. So, I, I mean, it's gonna be trafficked by, like you say, pedestrians, bikers, it's gonna be trafficked by transients, it's gonna be trafficked by come, you know, people coming and going. And so, that feel might be, to Stephen's point, wanna be reflected in this vision of that area. And, and so, when we kind of look through some of this stuff, yeah, I, you know, a whole glass building, I think the most glass I've seen in a building in Eden Prairie is probably the former ADC structure, which is now, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Optum. And so, that may not be so as suitable for a TOD area, which is gonna be this corridor that's heavily trafficked by, you know, four different, uh, transportation mediums. And some of these newer technologies might be better suited into that, but then again, we wanna know, is that gonna fall in line with what Eden Prairie wants to have as a vision for that area?
But let me, and let me speak to that, that, just on a little bit of a counterpoint. Do we want that transit-oriented area to really be different? Or, or do we want people, when, when they come in via the light rail, to say, I'm in Eden Prairie? And, and have the, the, what they see in the stations and, and the development around the stations be Eden Prairie? The tradition, the more traditional Eden Prairie. I'm not saying that's the right answer, I, I think that's an interesting, I think the discussion is a very interesting one, to say, what do we want, what do we want the city, how do we want the city to welcome people into it? And we have a new, a new way of people coming into the city now that we haven't in the past. And what do we want them to experience as they come into it?
I like that statement, and it's kind of what I was alluding to with the town center, where you have one area at the town center that's metal curtain panel, or although no one built it, but, you have one area that's different than the rest, it's kind of the same. With all these people coming into Eden Prairie, wanting to know their Eden Prairie, I like that. I think that would be the direction I would personally like to see.
Okay, excellent comments tonight. Emily, do you have any, uh, closing remarks for us at all?
Um, I don't think so, just that we'll take your comments and share them, and appreciate your time.
Yeah, I guess, I do, just a very, very quick comment, um, because I, the comments that have been made here were terrific. How do we ensure that the look of Eden Prairie is understood at some level? And continues to improve the, and contribute to the success of the city? Does that mean we need a, a process that's a little different than the process we have right now to, to evaluate new projects? I mean, right now, we seem to be doing pretty well, but this project apparently was asked for by folks on the city council because they saw materials outside of this area that they thought might look nice in Eden Prairie, from what Julie and I were talking about. But I guess it's just a matter of, is there anything specific we need to do to make sure that this look of Eden Prairie remains on the front burner somehow and is understood by those who are making decisions as we go forward?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if I can summarize the comments that I've heard from you this evening as a whole, understanding that there were individual comments throughout the discussion.
Please.
But to summarize, it's, what I heard is that overall, the planning commission doesn't identify any fatal flaws or red flags with the current regulations. There is an opportunity to infuse some new materials into that, preferably in that twenty-five percent category, maybe introducing some composite materials into the seventy-five percent category, but that, there is. But that, there is a comfort level with the durability and sustainability and the traditional look of, of our community as it is today. So, taking that into account, to answer your question about how do we continue to see Eden Prairie flourish and, and maintain its spot, if you will, I think is to continue to include the planning commission and the city council in these types of discussions and touch base back with you to, to see is, the, the development projects that are coming forward, do they meet the needs and the desires of the community over well, overall, rather, as we continue to redevelop and see new and different uses in different locations in the city?
Yeah, I think that's very well said. Commissioners, any closing comments from anybody?
Good discussion. Nice job, Emily.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Julie, any other planners' reports tonight?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, no, not tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much, Emily, for your time and for your consideration with this. Thank you. Any members' reports? Any continuing business? Any new business? Now, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.